Talking for the Catholic High School up north that I sit on the board.
Oh, okay.
They want to do all LED lights and but there's a cost associated with it. And I thought maybe there was a grant.
One minute.
I think there is. You have to, like I said, they're taking off what they're potentially funding.
You sign it to me? Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now.
Okay, guys, I have seven thirty. I will start in a couple of few seconds. We got a cameraman back there.
Yes.
I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll, please. Clistic. Kenny.
Aye, here.
Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Marquese.
Here.
Seven present. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience want to address the city council on any item? It doesn't have to be on our agenda this evening, but if we added this to our city council a number of, well, actually, probably a couple, few years ago, to allow residents who didn't want to sit through a whole meeting to address the council on a specific issue that they wanted to discuss. Does anyone in the audience want to address the council? And we'll move on. Let's move on to the approval of the minutes of, do you want to do one at a time?
Because the other was a special meeting.
Okay. The approval of the minutes of August seventeenth of the city council meeting. Alderman Marquese makes the motion, seconded by Alderman Clistic. Any additions or deletions in the minutes? The roll, please. Marquese.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Seven ayes. All the minutes have been approved, August twenty-fourth. We have another set of minutes for our special city council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Discussion. Any additions or deletions? Then the roll, please. Kenny.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Marquese.
Aye.
Seven ayes. The special meeting minutes have been approved. Let's move to receive the other communications. Alderman Shower.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last Monday night at about nine forty-eight PM, as I was about to go to bed, I got about ten phone calls and a lot of irate residents, pretty mad at me for supporting a Section Eight housing that's going on in Darien. There's only one problem, there is no Section Eight housing going on in Darien. It turns out, a person that's the head of a homeowners' association, and I'm not going to use their name because it's not the point, turned around and sent out a memo to about seven hundred homeowners talking about a Section Eight homeowners' association with four hundred units going in at the end of Nantucket and Frontage Road. No idea where how this came up, no idea how I was involved in it. Make a long story real short, just I got more phone calls this week about this whole thing, and I've explained to everybody there's no such thing happening with this. Point is, on this whole thing, how do I describe this? When you have something, a statement that comes through that doesn't seem, you know, logical, before you put it out anywhere, please contact one of the elected officials, or more importantly, the city of Darien, and we'll be more than happy to discuss it. The point I'm trying to make is, is that a lot of information gets misconstrued, and this is a perfect example of it. But again, for the people at home, there is no Section Eight housing going on in the city of Darien, as far as we know. Thank you.
On that location you're talking about?
Correct.
Yes. And is that incorporated into Darien at this point, at Nantucket?
Yeah.
That's right across from the old DuPage County sewage plant, if I remember correctly.
That's unincorporated still.
That's still unincorporated, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. And if anything were to be built there, we would get notice of it from the county for our approval and our review of that development, because anything within, is it a mile? Mile and a half radius of the city?
We get notifications, yes.
We get notified of any development that's within our planning area. So, thanks for clarifying that. Any other communications to share? I received one from Drew Kelly. He happens to be a city of Darien resident, he's in the audience this evening. He's also on our plan commission. He sent myself and staff members an email with an idea, a concept he wanted to throw out to us about working together with Waterfall Glen, the Forest, the DuPage County Forest Preserve, and possibly doing something to bring Waterfall Glen and the city of Darien together. I'm asking Darien, excuse me, Brian Van, our city administrator, to forward that email to all of you so you can review it, and, you know, we'll take it up for discussion. I would imagine that we could take it up at our next city council meeting and give it some direction if we want to send it to a specific committee, but if you would share your thoughts on that email with staff, with me, with staff, I'd appreciate that. But thank you for that email. Also, I want to remind everyone, we have our town hall, the city of Darien, and all the taxing bodies, sponsored by the Darien Initiatives Group, is holding another town hall. This will be our third annual town hall meeting. And this year, we are going to be holding it at the library. Seven PM at the library on September twenty-fourth. So, you'll be getting lots of information from other taxing bodies regarding this special event. It's an opportunity for, well, I'll be doing an abbreviated state of the city at the town hall meeting, plus you'll have an opportunity to talk to representatives for all the taxing bodies, school districts, fire protection districts, library. Everyone will have a representative there so you can speak to them regarding any subject matter that you want to discuss. So, mark your calendars, September twenty-fourth at the library, seven PM. Thank you. Any other communications to share? Going to the mayor's report, I have no mayor's report. Is there a city clerk's report? Yes. Meet and greet with the mayor will occur on Monday, September the twenty-first, at six PM here at the city hall in the conference room upstairs. And a reminder that this weekend is Darien Fest. And for information regarding the events, please go to the Darien Chamber of Commerce website at www.darienchamber.com. Thank you. Go ahead. Okay. City administrators' report.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
Department head information, I believe Chief, you're going to turn it over to...
Yes, ma'am. At this point, I'd like to turn over to our very capable future sergeant, Nick Squares, for a presentation on crime-free housing.
Okay, thank you.
As an update.
Yes. Remind us when we initiated this, I forgot. I know that you had a number, well, you're going to be discussing it, I'm sure. How many seminars you've already had?
Four down and at least two more to go.
And you might want to move the microphone up closer to you, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Thanks for letting me come in and speak to you guys tonight. Just want to give a brief update as to where we are with our crime-free multi-housing program. The implementation has taken a lot longer than we expected. We've identified ninety-nine separate properties within the city of Darien that would qualify under a multi-housing umbrella.
How many parcels?
Ninety-nine.
Okay.
And we included those as any multi-unit building with a shared entrance. And the information that's coming around will be the same as what I'm talking about. And we're talking about rental properties only, not owner-occupied. So, anything that's owner-occupied would not fall under this ordinance. Of those ninety-nine identifiable properties, only nine of them are mandated under our ordinance. Because our ordinance states any building with ten or more units. So, we only have nine of those currently mandated under the city. And those nine include Farmingdale, Myers Commons, Senior Living at eighty-third and Lamont, the Brookdale Apartments. And the breakdown with Brookdale is they're a one-hundred-and-twenty-unit complex, and each unit is individually owned and operated. Eighty-two of those, which is sixty-eight percent, are rentals. So, they do fall under the ordinance. At this point, only seventeen of those eighty-two have completed the training. So, we're a little behind. We do have a training next Tuesday, and then the following Wednesday. And I've asked Chief Secretary to send that information out to you guys as a council in case you're interested in coming by for the presentation. So, we only have twenty percent compliance within Brookdale itself. Colonial Manor at Caston Plainfield, Idlewild on Bailey Road, and Lakeview, eight oh one seventy-ninth, and then there's a number of properties over on Captain's Lane that are ten and twelve units. I didn't even realize they were twelve.
Me neither, yeah.
I've been doing this a long time and lived here a long time and never realized that. There are a number of complexes that aren't mandated under the ordinance where they're multi-unit, and without statistics in front of me, I know as a patrol officer working the road, I respond to those properties more often than not, and they are not mandated under this ordinance. So, out of that ninety-nine, we're only seventeen percent compliant. So, we're in the midst of a push to get these people trained. Unfortunately, with myself and Officer Pastick are the only two that are training right now. We have the two sessions coming up. We're looking anywhere between two and four hours on each of those sessions, depending on the number of questions and things that happen during that. And we go through that. We've had four seminars completed, great attendance. The people that are there have had great questions, are very willing to work with us, they're ready to move forward. The main goal of this program is to screen those that are applying to become renters. And we want to look at eliminating future problems. It does give landlords and owners and managers the ability to evict if needed. They still have to go through the court process, the civil process, things like that. Whereas a police department can't go in and kick people out. We do have the ability to issue citations for non-compliance and for violations of the ordinance. I have received a couple of emails, and I don't know, Mr. Van, if you guys can work on this with the website. They want a specific link to the housing ordinance, if that could be put under the police department's webpage. I just received one today as I was walking in, so that's why it's fresh in my mind.
Can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
When you said non-compliance, to whom is this non-compliance involved? Is this to the rental, the manager?
Not the renters themselves, it would be the owners or the landlords and the management companies. Our major management companies have attended the...
Okay.
What we're looking at right now is the individual owners. The property at Brookdale, the problem is, a lot of those homeowners live off-site. We have a couple that are out of state that aren't able to attend, so we're working with them on how to get them into compliance. But it is written in the ordinance that we do have the ability to cite for non-compliance, not attending the training, not using the crime-free lease addendum, not allowing us to, a quick inspection of the property, make sure that they're following the terms of the training and using the ordinance. My plan at this point, and again, this is all depending on how we go here in the next couple of weeks, how many more registrants we get, we're going to start issuing the conditional licenses on October first. Citations, I'd like to start issuing in the middle of October. And then we'll start our property inspections at the beginning of November with the hope that we are fully ready and open operation on the first of the year, which is about six to nine months behind where we wanted to be, but it's a monumental undertaking from where we were two years ago.
So, now, you're telling us that a lot of these properties are not mandated under our ordinance?
Correct.
Is that a glitch in our ordinance that we can change? Or is this the, is this the federal, what level was this, the federal or the state?
There's many different levels of the crime-free housing. It actually goes down to single-unit property owners. So, your neighbor next door in their single-family home. But based on the ordinance, I think it was based on a zoning...
That was actually council policy at that point, to cut it off at something manageable. This was a new project for us. The chief gave us a number of statistics at the complexes that were over X amount of units. So, again, even if we had other units in there, as you could see by our schedule, we wouldn't have been caught up. So, ultimately, part of this process is to, you know, take maybe a year or so at this with the units that we have, and then possibly come back to the council with a report. And it would be council policy if they want to start including smaller units, units below our threshold, Nick, which is again...
The ten units.
The ten units, correct. So, six flats were purposely left off at this point, as an example.
Are you going to add more seminars if you get some more...
As needed, yeah.
Yeah, as.
Rose has been scheduling all of those for me since I've been on midnight shift and unable to make phone calls at three in the morning. But she's been adding them, and actually, we added a second one today. But the multifamilies, I think we're good where we're at right now. There have been some voluntary participation. When we did send out the invites, we sent it out to all ninety-nine property owners. So, people that have been in those four flats and the six flats have participated. And I've had a couple of those homeowners who didn't realize the issues that they were having within their property. When they requested property reports and crimes and things like that, I gave them a list. They were dumbfounded by the amount of times that the police were there, and they actually revoked a couple leases based on that.
Well, yes, I mean, they should be looking at this as something that will help them
Definitely possible.
get better renters, yeah.
Right. And all in all, it'll help improve the quality within the city as well.
Okay. Alderman MacIver?
Thanks, Officer Squares. On the mandatory compliance, what's our, you had a twenty percent on Brookdale. What's our, and you had seventeen percent of all multi-housing. What's our percentage of completion for the nine properties that are mandatory?
Right now, not knowing how many of the Captain Lanes are actually the ten units or more, they're the ones that I'm waiting on. But our major complexes, excluding Myers Commons, have attended the seminars.
Okay, so you're...
And Myers Commons, we've been in contact with them, so...
Okay, and then for those, so how long is the class?
Anywhere from two to four hours, depending on how much I talk and how much they talk.
And then, is there something for those that are out of state that aren't, are always going to be a non-compliance problem?
No, unfortunately not. The positives of this program is it's a nationwide program that started in Arizona. So, they can attend a crime-free housing class in any jurisdiction, as long as they show proof to us that they've attended one that is similar to our ordinance.
They can do it anywhere else, okay.
Correct, right. I've had a number of people that have handed me certificates from Aurora, West Chicago, or similar places like that.
Nick, I'm sorry if you mentioned this, but out of the, you know, you mentioned the number that have not come for training yet. Somebody like Farmingdale probably did come through the training.
Correct.
And they did that along, and this is obviously a larger complex. They came through the training, and they also have implemented things, too?
They're starting to. There's a couple pieces of resistance that we're meeting with that complex in specific. And I've been attempting to work with them as best I can with the hours that I've been given. Most of our major complexes that are run by management companies already implement this policy. It may not be these words, but they have this policy in place for most of their lease agreements.
So, the fact that we have some not yet in compliance, we still have some success already we have had with the program?
Yeah. Most of our major complexes are in it. And actually, Brookdale's umbrella management company has been wonderful working with us. They have pushed it very far on their end. And as a matter of fact, most of their leases are due by the end of the year. So, this is where we're seeing a lot of these Brookdale people calling and saying, "Oh, we didn't know that we had to attend this class." So, that's why we're getting a push here this last month or two.
Alderman Clistic?
Quick question, this is a one-time thing for property owners, or is it renewed every year?
It is, it's a yearly renewal. Yeah. It's recommended that we do a yearly renewal and a yearly inspection. Chief and I have actually talked about extending that out, maybe making it a two-year as opposed to every year, because it is with ninety-nine properties that we have the possibility of inspecting and training. It's a large undertaking for the department.
And Nick, could you define inspection? It's not in the units, each individual, because some communities that have really large complexes may actually have an ordinance where they inspect inside individual units?
We do have some of that involved in this, and that's part of the training that goes in. And the basic things we're looking for is safety. We're not looking at anything, you know, code violations, anything like that. We're looking to make sure that they've got peep holes, that they've got the proper locking mechanisms, that their windows are capable of being locked, that sliding doors are being locked, and suggest improvements to them for the safety of that unit.
Okay.
Alderman Shower?
Nick, I got a question for you. The ponds is all, every address is Westmont for that, correct?
Correct.
There's no apartment building that's under Darien?
Nope.
Okay.
Westmont at one point did have a crime-free housing. I don't know how far they got with it. They did start it, so I don't know what their issue is over there. If they're still doing that program or not. There are a number of other woodridges involved in it, and there's a couple other towns around here as well.
Any other questions for Officer Squares? Thanks.
Two more classes coming up on the fifteenth and the twenty-third. You're more than welcome to attend, and you don't have to stay the whole time, because there is some stuff that gets boring.
Yeah, I just, I think it looks like a yeoman's task to get the remaining ones into a seminar before you start issuing non-compliance citations.
I do want to thank, and just here on the record, Chief Secretary Rose has been awesome with this, and Bill Whitesides and Mary Belmonte, our two CSOs, have done a large undertaking of knocking on doors and tracking down owners via water bills and things like that. So, I appreciate the help that they've put into this, too, because this is more than a two-officer job.
Absolutely. The CSO officers are very, very capable of helping you on that.
Do we have any statistics on the different calls that you had prior to the ordinance going into effect as opposed to now, and, you know, what's the productivity of, have the ordinance?
I would say that we could pull numbers from previous, but because we're not a hundred percent implemented on this program, I don't think that the statistics from the implementation would be legitimate and accurate at this point.
It's not really implemented at this point, yeah.
I would hope that, starting on January one, anything we track from there on out would be based upon the crime-free ordinance.
Okay. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, guys.
Alderman Belkey?
Yes, I wanted to circle back on the reports here. I think, Mayor, you were going to address the thermal king to give the residents something.
You know, thank you for reminding me. I don't, we have communicated through direct connect, through Facebook, through Twitter, in every means we can to let the citizens of Darien know that at the, after the August twenty-fourth Municipal Services Committee meeting in which the project, the Illinois Auto Center project, was, had a negative vote, two to one, that the petitioners chose not to proceed any further with the project and bringing it forward to the city council. So, in case you're hearing this for the first time, please note that this project is not going to proceed.
Mayor Weaver?
Yes.
I believe that that meeting was August thirty-first, and I also believe our special meeting was August thirty-first, because you met the same night we had our special meeting.
And you're just noticing now that we just voted on the special council meeting?
Well, I noticed...
It was August thirty-first.
You said the Municipal Services. I know the Municipal Services was August thirty-first.
And you know what? We didn't even notice it when we just voted on those minutes.
Yeah.
It's the wrong date on the...
Yeah, the special meeting, the city council, was August thirty-first, not August twenty-fourth.
We met the fifth, the special meeting was the fifth, the council was the fifth Monday of the month.
We had two of them. But the meeting that we had, the special meeting at...
It was the first one. It was on the twenty-fourth. It was on the twenty-fourth.
You had another meeting afterwards.
The first meeting...
Because you had to continue it because you didn't have all the comments from your people. So, the twenty-fourth is the correct date for...
The first meeting, I remember the first meeting, I sat in the seats. The second meeting, I had to stand, because I got here late. So, that's correct. The meeting dates are correct.
Now, in what I just said, I used August thirty-first as the date, correct?
The August thirty-first meeting is the one where the Municipal Services voted to deny.
That's what I was noting, yes. Okay.
That is correct.
Wanted to make sure it was clear in what I communicated just now. Okay. All right.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Is there any other department head reports? Okay, let's move to the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number fifteen sixteen oh nine in the amount of three hundred eighty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents from the listed funds and payroll for the period ended August twentieth in the amount of two hundred sixty-seven thousand, twenty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for a total to be approved of six hundred fifty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-two cents.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion? The roll, please. Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marquese?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seven ayes. The warrant has been approved. Did you want to go over the revenue reports?
Yes, these will be the revenue and expenditure reports for both June and July to June first, as we're getting caught up as our auditors just completed our audit. June, general fund reflects year-to-date revenue of two million eight hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars, expenditures of one million eight hundred seventy thousand, seventy-nine dollars, for current balance of three million, six hundred twenty-two thousand, forty dollars. Water fund, year-to-date revenue seventeen thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars, expenditures of six hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars, current balance of a deficit of two hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars. Motor fuel tax fund, year-to-date revenue ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars, expenditures of sixty-one thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars, current balance of three hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars. Water depreciation fund, year-to-date revenue of, deficit of two hundred one dollars, expenditures of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars, for current balance of a deficit of one hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. Capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue of a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred eight dollars, expenditures of six hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars, for a current balance of five million, one hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred twenty dollars. And the capital projects debt service fund, year-to-date revenue of two hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars, with a like amount in the current fund balance.
Any questions on the June thirtieth report? Then let's move to the July thirty-first.
July thirty-first reflects general fund, year-to-date revenue four million, fifty-one thousand, five hundred eighteen dollars, expenditures two million, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-one dollars, for a current balance of three million, eight hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars. Water fund, year-to-date revenue of nine hundred sixty thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars, expenditures of one million, one hundred sixty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars, for a current balance of one hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. Motor fuel tax fund, year-to-date revenue a hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars, expenditures of eighty-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars, current balance three hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Water depreciation fund, revenue of a deficit of two hundred eighty-nine dollars, expenditures of ninety-two thousand, forty-five dollars, current balance of a deficit of two hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars. Capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue of a hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars, expenditures of one million, two hundred eighty-three thousand, eighty-six dollars, for a current balance of four million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred nine dollars. Capital projects debt service fund, year-to-date revenue of two hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred two dollars, with the like amount in the current fund balance.
Any questions for the treasurer on the July thirty-first report? Well, let's move on to standing committee reports. Alderman Marquese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to report that at our last meeting, the Municipal Services Committee approved the minutes of the May twenty-sixth and the June twenty-second Municipal Service Meeting minutes, and submitted those to the clerk's office. And the next meeting is Monday, September twenty-eighth, at six-thirty here in the council chambers.
Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The minutes from our June first, two thousand and fifteen admin finance meeting have been turned in the clerk's office. And our next admin finance meeting will be held on Monday, October fifth, two thousand and fifteen, at six PM in our upstairs meeting room.
And Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next meeting of the Darien Police Committee will be on Monday, September twenty-first, at six PM in the police committee, or the police training room across the parking lot, pending agenda items and quorum. I will not be there. So, Alderman Belkey?
Well, it's incumbent upon, you've got the other two members to be there.
Yes.
Okay. If there's any agenda items.
Yes, ma'am, there will be.
There will be, so be there or be square. Okay. Let's move to questions, comments, and agenda-related. And from any of the aldermen? Then I'd like to open it up to the floor, is anyone here to address any of the items that are on our agenda this evening? Okay. Then let's move to old business, and there being no old business, we'll move right to the consent agenda. And for the viewing audience and everyone in the audience tonight, we removed item G under the consent agenda. That is the ordinance that was asking for variations to our Darien Sign Code for Our Lady of Peace. And we'll bring it back to our next city council meeting in two weeks with further, with additional information. Other than that, we have quite a few items under the consent agenda. Other than that, we have quite a few items under the consent agenda. I think if you're in the audience or you want... If you're from the viewing audience, you can go on our website to see all the items that are on the consent agenda so that I do not have to read all of these items, items A through O. So, with that said, do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey? The roll, please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
McGyver?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The items, all of the items except for item G have been approved. Let's move to new business. And there being no new business, I'd like to go to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature from the alderman first. Just... I just want to reiterate and remind everyone to put on your calendar the Darian Town Hall meeting on September twenty-fourth at the library. Anyone in the audience want to address the city council? Yes, please come up, yes.
Good evening. I'm Andy Hein and I'm with Kim Lee Horn and Associates.
Who?
Kim Lee Horn and Associates.
Kim Lee Horn?
Yeah. So, I'm a civil engineer working for Our Lady of Peace.
Oh, okay.
And I was just curious in regards to the reason for removing it from the agenda?
The three-to-ten-second timing on the flashing of the sign?
Okay.
The justification for that? We have other flashing signs in the city of Darian, but none of them are ten seconds, less than ten seconds. I think Chucks is sixty seconds, we've discovered. And we don't have any other locations that have a flashing sign that with that quick of a change.
Okay. So, as long as we have it sixty seconds minimum, then...
That would be great if you could do that, yeah. Then, we would... That would save staff a bunch of time investigating of why that was asked for in the first place.
Okay.
Do you know why it was asked for?
I don't. I need to talk to my client about that.
Okay.
I don't think that should be an issue, but, you know, we'll go back and look at that.
Okay.
So, is the intent that it's going to come to the next council meeting?
Yes.
With the change to sixty seconds or do we have discussions about that or how does that work?
We're assuming that we're going to have some discussions between you and our staff and getting some additional information.
Okay.
Yeah, the council asked us to review all the illuminated signs and the flash times. And as the mayor mentioned, if the church says, "Well, sixty seconds is fine," then that would appear to be fine with the council because that meets, we know Chucks. But I wasn't able to find some of the other ones before the meeting.
Yeah, the banks.
So, if you check and get back... Yeah, the banks and the high school. So, if you get back to Dan or Mike, whoever you've been dealing with?
With Mike, yeah.
And we can prepare that for the two weeks out.
Okay.
Prepare the information to the council.
Okay. Is that the only comment then?
That was the only question.
That was the only comment that we heard from any of us.
Very good. Well, we'll...
That's a safety issue. A concern for people driving.
Gotcha.
Getting distracted every three seconds to see what's the next message.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening. Norbert Tamas at seventy-two oh two Tennessee. This is a late request about the Darian Fest. Years and years, we always had the lights on at the Park District, but since we had the fire this year, those ball field lights won't be operating. And since Seventy-Second Street is a main thoroughfare for a lot of the families and there's no lights or sidewalks, I was wondering if Public Works put up their emergency generator lights from the park shining down to Bentley just to light up the street to make it safety for the weekend? Because we have a lot of cars that go around the barricades, but, you know, you can't see the people walking.
This is on Seventy-Second Street. This is the street just west of Darian, of the Darian Community Park.
Yeah, if the council wants, we could take a look at that. I don't recall the...
The issue is?
The park ball field lights were working all these years, but they had the fire this year, so the lights are inoperable and they're not going to be...
And the Park District is not going to get them operating before?
They haven't had them operating at all this year. The ball games are canceled and everything else.
They just haven't been able to fix them at this point. So, we'll have to check with them tomorrow, the status. I don't know if they're going to have it ready for the fest or not.
Well, let's hope that they get their act together and, you know...
Yeah, so we'd just like to get, you know, the street lit up because there's a lot of families walking, especially there's no sidewalks over there and everybody races down the street to get to the park to draw people off and coming back.
And, yeah, and we've had that blocked off ever since.
Yeah, we have, yeah, ever since.
Yeah, ever since the Darian Fest.
Traffic is low, but there's a lot of families with the kids running. But, I mean, the houses are set far so far back, it doesn't light up the streets and you can't see anybody walking on it with the Park District lights on. It was beautiful, but this year...
Well, what kind of traffic is going... Because it's blocked off. What kind of traffic?
Well, you have a lot of family traffic. They're all walking down the middle of the street. But you have a lot of cars that go around the barricades since now...
Oh, you mean walking traffic?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because years before, we had reserve officers at the top, but, you know, budget constraints or anything else, there hasn't been any up there. So, they drive around, you know, the barricades and see what they could do, but they race down the street.
Oh, all righty.
They just don't want to make sure anybody gets hit, you know, at night.
Okay, let's...
You know, they could put one of those emergency generator lights...
Yeah, we'll just have to look at it tomorrow. I don't know. You know, there was a comment now about the police over there. We'll just have to talk tomorrow. I'm not sure what that...